Well, what I told her, I said, honestly, for everything that Mark did, it's probably three years. And so we're trying to, so that makes having this discussion out. So I tried to. The woman who owns the land next to the old, she wants to sell it so we can have that. Then that's why that street keeps on through. Which would be good.
You remember the old, old Shing Ring's welcome river, playing that ballad, 25824? Yep. That's great. Go on, Joe.
The excitement of not being, you know, contested and all that, just wearing off and that is terror, it's like, what's.
It's like, because of what you wish for, you might get it.
Yeah, exactly where I'm at. And someone's been better than that. You know, and hit it January 1st of the whole year.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
I remember watching.
You need an agenda?
No, I got you.
Grace and cigarette things. If I don't, I wouldn't. There's all those.
I had some things that I wanted to, that were better record. And then eventually all that kind of stuff, but I keep thinking, whoa, hold up, figure out what you're doing first, you know? There's a judicial policy that you're very close to getting.
But that's too bad.
Yeah. It sounds like it's fair. But. Two years before you go, see millions worth of things.
For you now, yeah. That's what.
We'll figure it out. I want this next 25, how much of a chance, I'm going to think about the way we came to try this stuff.
Well, but I also think what the final, the support systems at all, what's kind of holding us together, you know, it's really the non-emotional, the non-partisan, this is what we're really. I see those processes. Truly.
Are we going to vote tonight? I think we are.
Maybe we.
Ways of reading.
It's on there for public hearing and then ordinance. So I guess that's what it is. Yeah, that's what it is.
About 6:30 in the, doesn't seem dark in here tonight, or is it? It's mood lighting in here tonight.
Light over here, they're not on.
One of them is not on.
Yeah.
It seems, oh goodness, seems a little.
I'll go out there tomorrow morning. Yeah, I'm gonna go tomorrow morning, then probably, um, Saturday.
Yeah, I'm gonna do Friday, Saturday.
Okay.
Yes.
Just let those be that.
Okay.
Right there, I'll leave it up off the keys, be there.
Okay.
This chair is down. Guess this one way to get you. That's really what he's talking about.
You're giving the color.
You better believe it.
Or certain superior warning.
How many's gonna be here?
I don't know. Wow. Eighty.
That's six. Is Theo coming, do you know?
I haven't talked to him, I don't know.
Hello, hello? How are you?
Good evening, everyone. We proceed each council meeting with a word of prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd like, please feel free to join us.
May I please? Father, as this Thanksgiving season approaches, Lord, there's so many things to be thankful for. This great nation, this great state, this great city, and your great love and your great mercy. We pray that you bless our proceedings tonight and guide us in our actions. These things we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll now call this meeting to order. Ms. Hurd, please call the roll.
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Ms. Mel?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Sisbee?
Here.
As you recall, we were going to actually have a committee meeting tonight about transportation. We do know that Rock Region's ready to start our Little Rock to Conway. They are starting a study on a micro bus system in Little Rock, and we thought we'd wait and give them a little time to see how well that goes, and they're willing to come work with us on that. So we're gonna wait, give it a little time, and let them do the study on it, see how it works. All right, you should have received copies of the November 12th City Council minutes and the November 20th special City Council meeting.
Make the motion for approval as submitted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve these minutes as submitted. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it six to zero. Our first order of business for this meeting is a approval of the monthly financial report ending October 31st. Mr. Winningham, I think you probably have some good news about some sales tax numbers.
Yes, sir, I do. Starting off in the revenue section there for the general fund, you can see, add warm tax, we got a nice check in October for the beginning of the final rounds of payments that the county receives for property taxes. We should receive another pretty good check this month in November, that the council will see reflected when we look at those November financials. That payment and little tax number, again, I'll remind you, we won't keep all that, and most of that will be remitted back to the county. We'll keep about what that budget figure is, about $20,000 in that account. Sales tax, um, good news, for sure. Uh, I know y'all remember back in July, a new rule took effect in the state of Arkansas, and we commonly refer to it as the internet sales tax. Really, what that law did is it now requires out-of-state vendors to collect and remit sales tax. So it might be an internet sale, it might not be. Really, it just evens the playing field for any vendor not with a local presence. They now have to collect and remit that tax. What we're seeing so far, um, that new rule is about doubling our growth that we got last year.
Wow.
So, first month we got it, was, we're at almost 9%. Last year, over 17, we were up about 4. So this month, uh, was up five and a half. Last year, we were up two and a half. The numbers we got, this month, we were up seven. Last year, we were up 3.6. So, it's a pretty steady trend so far that we've seen. Um, if you want to talk dollars, on an annual basis, a 6% increase versus a 3% is almost $600,000.
Wow.
About $590,000. So, good things, good things. That, that new law, you know, of course, the law was drafted to help every city in the state. Um, so it's not just us, it's not just Conway, but we, we, we'll certainly get some benefit from that new law. Um, year-to-date, we're up three and a half. Um, not a huge number, but it's still, it's pretty, dollars-wise, it's a good number, it's still a pretty solid upward trend that we're seeing, uh, for the year. Um, let's see. We're still showing net expense for the year. We've got some things that'll happen from now to then that'll help that. We've still got to make the $300,000 transfer from, um, A&amp;P funds to cover the operations at the Expo Center. But, the remodel of City Hall of 1111 Main Street, compounded with the lawsuit settlement that we paid out this year, I really don't see a way that we're gonna end up, uh, with a positive bottom line. I think we're gonna show a net expense when it's all said and done. That's not necessarily, it's not great, but those things happen from time to time. I mean, we're, we can't, every year, put money back, every now and then, we're gonna have to reach in and, and spend some of the, the fund balance that we've accumulated over the years.
But Tyler, we still have our $2 million for, in reserve, and then the $2 million for cash flow, so.
We have $2 million for cash flow. Um, we moved a million of the reserve, the 18th of this month, to cover those, uh, the remodel expenses at City Hall. We've now hit just over a million year-to-date for that, so, uh, to go along with the ordinance that appropriated that money, um, ordinance number 39 this year, uh, I believe it's section two of that ordinance, said that the council wished to use a million dollars of the reserve.
So that'll, that'll be reflected in next.
Yes.
In 2020 budget, you'll see, you should have gotten copies of those late this afternoon.
I didn't, I just checked, yeah.
Okay, well, have you set those out yet?
I'll just send it to you.
Okay, all right, we'll get them out tomorrow. But you'll see, uh, in next year's budget, we put $250,000 back towards our reserve, start paying that back. Do that over a four-year period of time? Yes.
Me too.
So that, uh, in the expenditure section, that non-departmental, you can see we're way over budget. The ordinance that's on the agenda later on this evening to appropriate those funds will rectify that situation, so that, that department is not showing so far overspent versus its budget. And I think that's all the comments I have, unless there's anything the council wishes to discuss.
I'll make a motion to approve the monthly financials. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financial. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Winningham.
Yes, sir.
Our first order of business this meeting will be a public hearing to discuss an ordinance to fix rates for the services rendered by the wastewater system of the Conway Corporation. We'll now declare this public meeting open. If you speak for or against this, if you would, step to the microphone and state your name and your address for the record, please. Mr. Carroll, we'll start with you.
I'm Brett Carroll, 14 Summerfield Drive, that's where I live, and also the CEO of Conway Corp. And I'm speaking in favor of, of the rate increase. I appreciate the consideration that, uh, Mayor and the council has given. Um, just a few points to make, there are a number of reasons why the rate increase is necessary. Um, but the biggest driver is aging or undersized collection mains. A number of our mains were installed in the 1940s, and we have an obligation to make sure critical infrastructure is taken care of, so that it serves the needs of our customers. Asking for rate increase is one of the things I like least about my job, but it is a part of the job nonetheless, and it's absolutely necessary to address issues that our engineering operations staff have identified. I'm gonna let our CFO, Tracy Moore, talk in more detail about the reasons for and the impacts of the rate increase. Uh, we also have some subject matter experts here, in which you have questions about our proposal. But I wanted to leave you with just a few thoughts about our process for proposing, uh, rate increases. Number one, we first consider the factors that make an increase in rates necessary, and how we can fund the improvements that are needed. We consider the impact of the rate increase on our customers and your constituents, and we evaluate the reasonableness of what we're proposing. We do all these things before our board approves the rates, and before we bring our board-approved rates to you. Uh, members of my team, of my team are here to answer any questions that you might have. Uh, thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll.
I'm Tracy Moore, and my address is 3460 Juniper Drive in Conway. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of Conway Corporation, and I would wish to speak in favor of the ordinance that's before you. Each of you should have gotten a, a handout. I, I will not, I will not read every one of those slides, I would not propose to do that, but I would like to hit the high points. If you'll turn, first of all, to page two, I think there are probably three, as Brett mentioned, one of them already. The three factors that I believe are, are paramount in our decision-making process. Uh, first of all, built in 1967, Tucker Creek Wastewater Treatment Facility is, is kind of like the old car that you spend more time working on than you do driving. Costs to keep that plant up and, and running are, are becoming cost prohibitive to us. In addition to that, our newest facility, Tupelo Bio, which went online in about 2014, has capacity enough, excess capacity, in order to treat wastewater flows at that facility. We need to fund the, uh, infrastructure to get what is now being treated at Tucker Creek, uh, plant to the Tupelo Bio. That is part of our ask today. Uh, another thing is, as, as Brett mentioned, aging, uh, infrastructure. You all are, uh, watch the news and are in the news, and, and you guys see aging infrastructure as much as we do. In fact, just this last week, there was a story on, on one of the news feeds about SIRSI. They're going through a similar process, they have lots of aging infrastructure. I think it's last week or the week before, the city of Alonia voted for a rededication of a half-cent sales tax and a new quarter-cent sales tax, uh, which they're gonna use to fund infrastructure improvements in their wastewater system. They also have, uh, rates in, in place, uh, not only sales tax, but also rates. We have never chosen to use sales tax as a method to fund utilities, we do not believe that's proper use. Uh, for the city of Conway, believe, we believe sales tax should be dedicated to police and fire and general fund, and, uh, we believe that the rate payer should bear their, uh, their portion of rates. The third point, uh, aging it, as I mentioned, aging collection system. Some of our, some of our infrastructure was put in in the 1940s. One of the most, uh, prevalent problems we have is what we call the railroad interceptor. It's a, it's a large, uh, collection main that runs down the middle of Conway, collects most of the wastewater for, for this area, as well as, uh, some areas of Hendricks and other areas. Uh, it is badly undersized, needs to be changed out. Uh, another thing is, uh, our street projects. Your five-year plan, I applaud it. I think it's the best thing that, that's happened in Conway in a long time. I've lived here since 1980, and some of the streets, uh, that I've driven on since 1980 probably haven't been repaired since 1980. So I appreciate your doing that. It was desperately needed. Our streets should be, uh, really nice, and I appreciate what you're doing. However, there is some residual effect to all of our utilities, and to our wastewater utility in particular, uh, we estimate about $825,000 annually, just to move infrastructure and to rehab that as you're doing. We hope to be in step with you along the way, and, and, and take care of those needs as you're repaving and restructuring your streets, rather than us having to go and dig them up when their main breaks that, that come along, and, and we know that happens. Um, in addition to that, there are some, also some projects that we need to fund that are separate from the, from the, uh, street projects, and, and we, we are asking, uh, part of this go to that. Uh, all of our options, we believe, that, that could have been done, have been done, uh, to postpone this as long as we could. Uh, on page nine, there's an example of a few things we have done most recently that helped, uh, postpone this, or help mitigate to some degree what we're asking for. In 2017, we restructured, with the help of bond counsel and, and investment bankers, a 2015 bond issue that created $900,000 in cash flow. We saved $900,000 over the life of that loan. In, uh, 2018, uh, you as a council passed a, an ordinance that allowed us to, to, uh, to put some teeth into a grease trap ordinance, and as a result of that, we, we're saving ten thou, tens of thousands of dollars a year, uh, we're ordinarily having to spend to pump out grease from our lift stations. In 2018, we also secured the, the, uh, professional services, uh, for, from an agency that helps us manage our debt service payments and allows us to earn interest to the, uh, amount that's allowed by law, and that, that helps, that helps us not have to ask for as much. In 2019, we also refinanced, uh, 20, uh, 2012 A bond issue that saves us about $800,000 in, in debt service payments. Page, if you will, four, our ask is that, that we ask you to approve, uh, the rates that have been approved by our board of directors. We would ask, beginning in January of 2020, a 15% rate increase, a 5% rate increase effective January of 2021, a 5% increase effective January 1 of 2022, and then a 2% annual increase after that, every year. We believe the 2% will allow us to postpone a larger rate increase for many years to come. Uh, perhaps you have a question about what this will mean to our, to our customers? Page, um, let me find it here. Page six shows the impact of this compared to other cities. At present, I mentioned Valonia, at present, Valonia is at $46, uh, per customer for 5,000 gallons, uh, monthly treatment. At the conclusion of our three years, we will be at 4907, plus we have no rate, uh, no sales tax on top of that. Bentonville is presently at 5186 for the same 5,000 gallons. Now, 5,000 is an average, uh, residential customer's consumption, uh, that, for wastewater. It's based upon water usage. We must, some of our customers, especially multifamily, use less than that, so obviously the impact will be less to them. Uh, page seven shows our current and proposed rates, and by the way, I have copies of these for anybody else here in the audience that would like to have one, I'll be happy to give it to them. Um, to conclude, I, I, I would ask you to consider this. We, uh, as Brett said, asking for rate increases is not something we enjoy. It is absolutely, uh, the last thing we want to do, and we only come when we've exhausted all other avenues. So I, I would ask that you adopt these rates, and I would ask, answer any questions that any of you may have of me, that I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll do, I'm sorry, yes, sir, go ahead.
Hello, I'm John Malfati, 365 Davis. Um, I would like to speak against. Um, part of that is, with the 30% increase overall, initially in the three years, at what, after which it'll continue to 2% going forward past that, the bio is supposed to be more efficient. Why are we gonna continue to see an increase after that, that growth? As far as, you know, why is it not coming back down instead of continuing to increase 2% over and over? Um, with all the savings that there's been done, is there other room in the budget to cover some of the costs to not go as high as a 30% increase? Um, you know, as a young adult looking to buy in Conway, I'm a renting individual at the moment, it makes it hard to set your stones in Conway, thinking about where it's headed and how much it's going to cost in utilities, um, to continue to live here. Conway's growing a lot, I don't think that 30% is a fair amount initially, I think it should be addressed to see, um, where it's going in the next few years before jumping that high. Um, I see a lot of neighborhoods being built. I work in town for FedEx Express, it's neighborhoods after neighborhoods being built, which is more individuals coming in to pay those rates, and they're large homes, apartment buildings being built. I think that money will make that difference rather than a 30% increase. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for or against? Okay, we'll declare this public meeting closed, and I'll bring it back to the council for your consideration.
I'm not sure where the 30% comes into play that this gentleman's talking about. It's 25 over three years.
Yeah, and the 2%, yeah, and, and the 2%, the 2% stops, it goes in effect, uh, January 1st of 2023, and then at that point, it stops, is that correct, Mr.? It's not a 2% from here on out, is it, Mr. Moore?
The 2%, uh, that's very similar to what we did with our last water. Uh, our cost to operate generally increased about 2% a year. Uh, the chemicals that we use, the pumping power, uh, different things, labor costs go up, so, we're asking for 2% in order that, we really believe that will allow us to, to get rid of some of our debt and, uh, not have to take O&amp;M money for debt service, and so that's why the 2% passed that, and we, we honestly believe that, that, that will postpone a larger, like, uh, 25% in this case over three years. We really believe the 2% could, could really help us for many, many years to come.
It was an annual, okay. Thank you. Yes, sir. Counsel, any discussion? Any questions? John, I appreciate you bringing that forward to us, thank you very much. Uh, we are, uh, I don't want to give a Conway Corporation history, but, uh, if you live in Conway, you know that, right now, the Conway Corporation electric rates are, are far superior from a standpoint of cost than, than anything else, and, uh, this is a portion of, uh, the Conway Corporation and it's a portion that, that I want to make sure that these guys have, have got the money to, to, uh, pump things out of my house that, that I don't want to keep in it. So, so I, I appreciate you, what you said, thank you very much for bringing that up. You're understanding. Take my hand.
Also, the, uh, the towns mentioned were much smaller, is Conway growing, you know, to compare their numbers and their, their costs to ours, I don't think is quite right. I don't have those numbers in front of me.
He's got a packet.
But, to compare Valonia to, to Conway's infrastructure, I don't, I can't imagine that, that's near in the same ballpark.
Sure.
I'm, I'm very fond of Conway Corp. I, I think they're a great company, I think that they do good for our utilities compared to what's going on. Um, you know, I, all I hear is complaints of, of how much Entergy costs to other individuals, and Conway Corp does really good. And I just, it's a fear of, you know, of mine and maybe others, that, where, where does that momentum, where's the momentum going? You know, we're, we're going to 27% in the next three years, and then that 2% annual after that, you know, when, when is the next time that we will have this meeting of, I understand that they haven't had a rate increase in seven years, but when is the next time that we have a meeting where, you know, three years, we're looking at another 27%? You know, and when do we get up to where it's not a competitive rate to Entergy or other, energy, you know, utility companies?
Sure.
So, I think, I, I'm very fond, like, very fond of Conway Corp, but it's just something to consider.
Thank you very much. Some of the other communities that were, were compared were Benton. Do you have a packet you can give him, an extra one?
She, she has one.
We're, we're Bentonville.
Yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. There are a number of communities here, obviously, we can, we talk about Valonia and Russell because of their proximity to Conway, but we also compare ourselves to Benton, Bryant, Bentonville, Fayetteville Hot Springs, Little Rock, so, so all the communities that are growing and that are, that are in pretty good size, and so, anyway, and as far as future rate increases, we, we don't know what that happens. We certainly hope that the 2% that we do is, is something that will help forestall a larger rate increase in the future. We think that if we, if we do this, then, then it's more equitable distribution of cost and benefit, we're not waiting a long time and, and having a big rate increase so that the people that, that weren't paying that 2% weren't paying their fair share. So that's really the, the methodology behind that, and the philosophy behind that, and again, very similar to what we did with water, when we did the water rate increase in 2016, so.
And, and just for everyone's knowledge out, out in the audience and those are watching, Conway Corporation and the city of Conway have a really good working relationship now in our engineering departments, and historically, we'll fix a street and lo and behold, something will break, sewer line or water line, and Conway Corporation have to cut our new street. So now, we've got a five-year plan, we're working, our two engineering groups are working together, and they're going out and replacing infrastructure, infrastructure that needs to be replaced prior to us going in and overlaying the street. So, it, it, I know it does push y'all, and y'all have done a great job, even, uh, after we got through paving Tyler, they had to make a cut because the water line broke. Well, instead of them going in, or us going in and cold patching it, Conway Corporation has worked out a deal with us, where they're paying the group that laid the asphalt in to go in, lay cement down, and then come back.
Little Rock, so all communities that are growing and that are in pretty good size. And so, anyway, and as far as future rate increases, we don't know what that happens. We certainly hope that the 2% that we do is something that will help forestall a larger rate increase in the future. We think that if we do this, then it's more equitable distribution of cost and benefit. We're not waiting a long time and having a big rate increase so that the people that weren't paying that 2% weren't paying their fair share. So that's really the methodology behind that and the philosophy behind that. And again, very similar to what we did with water when we did the water rate increase in 2016, so.
And just for everyone's knowledge out in the audience and those who are watching, Conway Corporation and the City of Conway have a really good working relationship now in our engineering departments. And historically, we'll fix a street and lo and behold, something will break, sewer line or water line, and Conway Corporation have to cut our new street. So now we've got a five-year plan. We're working, our two engineering groups are working together, and they're going out and replacing infrastructure that needs to be replaced prior to us going in and overlaying the street. So it, I know it does push y'all, and y'all have done a great job. Even after we got through paving Tyler, they had to make a cut because the water line broke. Well, instead of them going in or us going in and cold patching it, Conway Corporation has worked out a deal with us where they're paying the group that laid the asphalt in to go in, lay cement down, and then come back and patch it so, with a hot patch, so that it'll continue to be a smooth surface. So I appreciate the opportunity to work with y'all on that. I appreciate you settling in Conway.
Yeah.
We do.
Well, in the absence of a 2% annual increase, when you go seven years without one, then you come back for 15. That's kind of how the math shakes out. And so I will agree with you though, sir. Here in three or four years, if they're back with another double-digit increase, I'll be sitting there right beside you asking some questions. So I think we're good though for a while with this. I move for adoption of the ordinance.
Second. Well, we need to weigh the three readings.
Wait the readings, have it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to weigh the two readings. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I make a motion for adoption.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
This ordinance was previously assigned number O-19104. Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Thank you all. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our standing committees, starting with Community Development. Mr. Hawkins, we'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on this portion of the agenda is a resolution requesting that the Faulkner County Tax Collector place a lien against property at 110 Oak Lawn for expenses incurred by the city. There was $188.87 of money in penalties and fees incurred by the city for this, and we have a resolution to read. It's Resolution R-19...
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three on the resolution? Thank you very much. Resolution R-1973. Is there a representative or an owner of 110 Oak Lawn Drive with us this evening? Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone, so with that, I move for adoption of the Resolution R-1973.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for property located at 110 Oak Lawn in the amount of $188.87 for expenses. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd, would you call for the vote, please?
All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Passes six to zero. Thank you. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is another resolution. It's for money that the city has spent to clean up property at 1590 Marley's Drive. Is there an owner or representative of an owner from 1590 Marley's Drive with us this Mr. Mayor, I don't see anyone, so we have a resolution to be read for this item. It's Resolution R-1974.
Make a motion for the adoption of the resolution. Second.
Did I get a second from you, Mary?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for property located at 1590 Marley's Drive. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve an impact fee credit agreement for Rush How Development for the Stone Dam Creek Trail Improvement Project. And we have that agreement before us, and I'm looking for a value on that, but I'm not seeing anything. Usually these are...
It's $6,500.
Thank you very, oh, thank you, James.
Yep.
Kind of appeared from nowhere. Thank you very much.
This is the second reading of this. Last month, you all approved the warranty deed to accept the land. It's very similar to the other ones that we've done. We'll probably be continuing using these in the future. This is tied to improvement for Stone Dam Creek, and so we're kind of double dipping. We got some dedication that was done, you know, via, for getting credit for the Highway Department, and then also giving Rush How credit for the impact fee agreement here. So it's a fairly small one comparatively to the others that we've done, but it's something, so.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve this warranty deed for the Stone Dam Creek Trail, Improvement Phase Two with Rush How. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an accounting ordinance accepting and appropriating funds for the Conway Tree Board in support of Arbor Day. Donations in the amount of $245 have been received, and we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's Ordinance O-19...
One-eighteen.
One-eighteen.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance accepting annexation of some property into the City of Conway, including a little over 31 acres located north and south of Impy Trail. And we have an ordinance to read for this annexation. It's Ordinance O-19119.
Make a motion to waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Besides Mr. Ledbetter and myself, does anybody know who Impy Trail was named after?
I do.
I know you do.
I do not. That would be Impy Ledbetter. That'd be Mr. Ledbetter's dad.
Really?
He was quite the character.
Ah, be darned.
Impy was his given name?
That was his given name, yes.
Was it, really?
Yes.
Unique.
I'll tell you some stories sometime.
I would love, I would love to hear them. I bet they're dandies.
I bet Mark Helsinger knows some stories too, don't you? Yeah.
I make a motion for adoption of the ordinance. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezon property at 472 Ingram Street. It presently is zoned R2A. The requested zoning is a PUD. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their November 18th, 2019 meeting, and the vote that night was six to nothing that the request be forwarded to City Council with the recommendation of approval, including the approved uses and conditions as outlined in the Theodore Bond PUD Final Development Plan. And we have an ordinance to read for this item. It's Ordinance O-19120.
Make a motion to waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero. James, if you would, would you explain so everyone understands what this means?
Yes, so the property is presently zoned R2A, which allows duplex development. What the applicant is seeking to do on the property is rezone it to a planned unit development. And so that is essentially a, I wouldn't call it necessarily a negotiation process, but it's a give and take process between the developer and the planning department to develop something that's compatible within the area, the proposal. What they're proposing to do are two townhouse duplexes fronting off to the west and then retaining a single-family home that faces to the north, one standalone single-family home. So it's a total of five units on the site, so it's not terribly more dense than what they would be able to do otherwise on the property. And it's, they've submitted us drawings in terms of the, using the plating on the site. It's just outside of the overlay district, the old Conway overlay district. So all of those protections that exist on the west side of the street don't exist on the east side of the street. So that's another way going through the PUD process that have a little bit more say in how it looks rather than just be totally different.
As-is, how many units could they put on it?
I don't know exactly. I would have to calculate.
Let me ask it a different way, and you may have to calculate. Is it, they're wanting to put, could they put two duplexes on it if they tore the house down?
Um...
Is it bigger than a duplexes as-is?
It's 150, 153 by 80. Does that sound right?
I'm just trying to see what, five versus what it could do right now.
Right.
Because again, this is that area of town where we just shotgun the stuff in. A few blocks away, we didn't quite want it.
I would have to get that information back to you. I know it would at least be one duplex.
Well, and it's a big difference between two living units and five. I do appreciate the PUD aspect of it to make it better for the area, but again, I mean, look at that map, you could pretty much do that in every gray square you see there. So the question is, I mean, how cram would we want to put it? I mean, if it can go from four units to duplexes, four units to five, it's one thing. If it goes from two to five, that's...
It's a lot.
Another story.
Calculating in my head, I think it would be four to, you could subdivide this to where it would create two lots, so you'd be going four to five. Because it's 12, it's just over 12,000 square feet.
It's almost a double size compared to something.
That's what it looks like.
And he could do that.
You know, there's a fine line between investment into an area that needs it and just cramming stuff in there.
I understand that.
You can see some examples of that going on in there right now.
We can table this until we get some more information, if you'd like.
Yeah. Maybe, what is your feelings? Doesn't sound like he's in favor.
I think with the PUD, there would be protections.
Tighter restrictions.
Yeah.
Better control.
Make sure, plus we're retaining a house that's already there.
I'm good for whatever y'all want to do. I mean, I'll probably just vote no, but y'all can vote.
I make a motion for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
I mean, of the ordinance, I'm sorry.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion?
I will say, I mean, if it's two versus four, I don't like that. I mean, two versus five, if it's four versus five, that's, that's okay.
Well, he's saying they can do it.
And you're telling me it's probably four, so I mean, I...
Excuse me, I misspoke. I was basing that off R2. It being R2A, it's 10,000 square feet. So it is a 12,000 square foot lot, so it would be, it's one to five. If they zone it R2, then it would be four versus five.
So currently, a duplex would not be allowed there, is what you're telling me, or one duplex?
One duplex, yeah.
So if they tore the house down, they could build one duplex of two units versus five.
Correct.
Well, again, I just want us to be...
Oh, yeah, that's a huge difference.
That's a big difference. I mean, those rules are put in place for a reason.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Hurd.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
No.
Mr. Hawkins?
No.
Mr. Ledbetter?
No.
Mr. Grimes?
No.
Mr. Grimes?
No.
Mr. Ledbetter?
No.
Mr. Grimes?
No.
Mr. Ledbetter?
No.
Mr. Grimes?
No.
Mr. Grimes?
No.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezon portions of property at 2505 and 2590 Salem Road. They presently are zoned A1. The requested zoning is C2. This was reviewed at planning, or by the Planning Commission at their meeting on November 18th and voted six to nothing at that time to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval. And we have an ordinance to be read for this item. It's Ordinance O-19121.
Make a motion to waive the three readings. Second.
Okay. Okay, we'll check. We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. I'm sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
James, is it gonna, the entrance into the new facility, will it be right where Meadow Lake comes? Or is it gonna be, it's hard to tell.
Well, it'll have to go through the development review process.
I make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Watson, Mr. Erby, there you go. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to rezon property at 105 Eve Lane. It currently is zoned A1. The requested zoning is R1. This was reviewed by the Planning Commission on November 18th, 2019, and they voted unanimously to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval. We have an ordinance to read for this item. It's Ordinance O-19122.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six to zero.
Motion for adoption.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. James, just so folks who are watching and are out loud, would you tell them what we're doing here from A1 to R1?
Yes, the A1 zoning is agricultural. That is largely designated for areas that don't have sewer service because it has a one-acre lot size minimum. The area was originally on a private sewer, and it was converted over to Conway Corporation some time ago. What the applicant is trying to do is take an existing lot, split it into two, and so in order to get the, meet the lot size requirements, or to get down to the lot size requirements to be able to build another house, needs to zone it to R1. So it's for an infill development lot, is what it's for.
Okay.
Perfect. I made a motion for adoption.
He's not here.
Not here. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Passes six to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance amending the Conway zoning code and subdivision ordinance concerning submission deadlines for various application types. And we have an ordinance to read for this. It's ordinance O19-123.
Make a motion that we waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero. Would anyone, would any developers like to speak to this? Okay. Counsel, back to you.
I make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion?
This is just changing days required for submission. Uh, yes. So what we're, what we're trying to do is our review periods, with the 17 days out that we have now, we don't have enough time for, to do a review, return it to the applicant, get the applicant to return it back to us before Planning Commission. And so what we end up having is, we'll get an application in. Sometimes that means the application might end up getting deferred a month. We had a cell tower a few months ago where we had that, where it drug out to two months. And so we're, we're trying to do it to where we can get more things headed off at the pass. So if, for instance, maybe we have something in, in the case of the rezoning earlier from the, on the C2 rezoning, they'd originally asked for C3, and we had recommended that they do C2. If we had the application in further, they would have had time to also submit a conditional use. So with that application, you're gonna be seeing a conditional use go later. So it's really about us trying to get things addressed before they come to Planning Commission in a little bit more meaningful way. And also overall reducing, even though we're going from 17 days to 30 days, trying to reduce the overall time that we're, we have applications in our department.
It's actually, we're actually trying to pick up that process.
Yeah. So it's about accountability as well.
Take a motion?
Yes, I'm in motion already.
Okay, just so I don't, let me, this one is not working tonight? I can hear out of my left ear. I hear well over here, but I'm sorry, I can't hear over here. All right.
Probably this as well.
We need to spin up over here.
Tell us what you want us to tell him.
It beeped an hour ago. It means my battery's dead, so my apologies. We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
This is O19-123. Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Passes six to zero. If y'all noticed, I've tried to, I've tried to look at everybody when they're voting to make sure I can hear them. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance amending Article 1301 of the Conway zoning code concerning loss of legal, nonconforming status. James, I know you're gonna tell me all about this in just a minute, but we do have a resolution to read. It's resolution, I'm sorry, it's ordinance, pardon me, pardon me. It is ordinance O19-124. Thank y'all for correcting.
I make a motion to waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero. James?
Uh, well, we've had an issue recently that came to light, I think when, it was probably about 2011, when there was some revisions to the sign code that were made. In there, we went back and looked at the council minutes at that time, and there was a provision in there pertaining to when a sign has to be relocated as a result of a transportation project, a city transportation project. The way it originally read in there is that they wouldn't lose their grandfather status. The discussion in the meeting said, take that out. And so Planning Department went back, took that out, and it was, it was passed. It's just that it didn't get taken out everywhere. And so made a mistake, I personally made a mistake a few months back reading one section of the sign code and not reading the other section of the sign code. So we have, we have conflicting provisions in the sign code, and so this is really what this is meant to do is reflect what that original intent that you all had as counsel back in 2011.
Okay, thank you, James.
Make a motion for adoption of the ordinance?
Second.
And the emergency clause as well.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
And the emergency clause. Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Both of those pass six to zero. And last one, Mr. Hawkins, for you tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, the final item here is a resolution to modify the planning area boundary within the territorial jurisdiction. We have a resolution to be read. It's Resolution R1975.
Correct.
What is this about?
Thank you very much. I'm glad you asked. James, and why is this here tonight?
So this is, this is an extremely complicated matter.
Doesn't look like it.
It doesn't look like it, but it is. There are two key terms to think about when we're talking about this. One is called territorial jurisdiction. In state law, the state law establishes an area where a city can regulate for planning, and that's what is called the territorial jurisdiction. Currently, that area is one mile outside of the city limits. So if you took just a plain buffer, went straight out 5,280 feet in every single direction, that's our territorial jurisdiction. The state law also calls out that the city shall set an area within that where it creates plans and implements regulations. That, for most cities, is commonly known as a planning area boundary. One of the things we have discovered recently is that there is a lot of confusion about what our territorial jurisdiction is, planning area, and how those things are applied. When you look at our Conference of Plan, our Master Street Plan, it actually bleeds out much further than we have the regulatory authority to regulate. So it goes off over a mile. And part of that is probably due to the fact that about five or six years ago, the legislature took those, took the planning area boundaries from five miles or the territorial jurisdiction, from five miles down to one mile for a city of our size. And we additionally have some confusion in that our subdivision regulations say that the regulations apply within the territorial jurisdiction. And so it's, it's that full mile extent. What we're trying to do is, this is a first step to correct our, our Conference of Plan, our Master Street Plan, and then go through our subdivision code and make sure that all of those things are all reconciled to one boundary, and those are reconciled to logical boundaries within the, within the community that goes out nearly to the full extent. From a practical standpoint, in terms of what, what regulations change as a result of this, none really do at this point, because the subdivision regulations apply within the full territorial jurisdiction. So we're changing this to where, with the planning area boundary, with the intent of changing the subdivision regulations based on this, that they'll be pretty much the same. So this is a multiple phase thing. It's, again, I realize it's, it's really, really complicated. It's a lot easier to explain with a map.
That was a very good explanation.
I make a motion for adoption of the resolution. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this request to modify the planning area boundary within the territorial jurisdiction. Any further discussion?
I'm still kind of fuzzy. With the census coming up in 2020, and the likelihood that we're gonna go over 60,000 people officially, that's going to extend that jurisdiction area, is it not?
It will extend the jurisdictional area to two miles.
Okay. Now, let's put our hats back on from a couple, maybe a couple of years ago, when we talked about what we were gonna do south of town. Were we gonna extend services out south of town? And we kind of decided that we might not have that, I forgot the number, $5 million or $10 million worth of money.
I think it was more than that.
Yeah, I don't remember exactly the, the number, but, I mean, if we pass this, are we on the hook for that?
No.
So we can basically tell people what they can do with their property, but we're not gonna provide them any services.
There are, well, from a standpoint of an ordinance that y'all recently passed, allowing Conway Corporation to serve water outside of the city, that's, that's something that has been relaxed within the last year. Additionally, under certain agreements, there's the ability to provide sewer. But that, that's one thing that I would, you know, strongly recommend that you very carefully review when sewer is allowed to be extended. The most recent, I think, was for a behavioral health facility.
East of here.
East, east of town. And that, that's one that made a lot of sense. But once a city starts giving away sewer outside the city limits, it's, it's a little bit like giving away the, the milk for free in a way. It reduces one of the incentives for, for an individual to annex into the city. So from a practical standpoint, the city's already regulating a full mile out there. Now, is, is there complete compliance with that? Absolutely not. The major intent of this is when we have subdivisions that plan to come in outside the city limits, that we're making sure that the streets in those areas are constructed in a manner that meets city standards so that in 10 years, 20 years, when we do annex it, that we're not annexing long-term liabilities that we have to then pay to fix. That, that's, that's one of the reasons behind that.
Is, is there a driver that's bringing this to the forefront now? I mean, is there something that's happening that we need to know about that's?
It's something that got brought, brought to my attention in, in just looking at things. There, there are some things down south, south of town, that might be of concern. But more than anything, it was realization that between the adopted maps that we have and what our regulations say and what our plans say, it's really unclear, and it needs to be reconciled.
And I think, and I will jump in here real quick.
Sure.
James and I have had quite a few discussions on this issue. He's kind of juggling a lot of different things, and he's trying to make it more consistent for several different reasons. One is to protect Conway's future growth. Like he said, we don't want to take over things that are gonna end up being a long-term liability for us. We're also working with Conway Corporation, they're filed water plan, but also just for people that are looking, developers that are looking in this area, they know exactly what to expect. They know the regulations they have to follow, and there's no question. So I think it eases that process for them, too. So when talking about making his office even more efficient, when the rules are clear, it makes everyone, and gets everybody on the same page, it makes it a lot easier to do business with Conway.
Well, and, and I don't, I don't doubt that that's needed. I don't doubt that that's needed. But there might be some people south of here, east of here, maybe out toward the river from here, who might have some property that might disagree with basically turning over all of their rights to their property. And I'm, 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 I'm a little foggy on this, okay? And, and so I, personally, I need a little education, if not else.
The, the way that the subdivision ordinance is currently written, they're already regulated.
Okay.
So if, if someone tries to build a subdivision within a mile of the city limits, based on the absolute legal definition of what territorial jurisdiction is, they fall within that boundary. What I'm trying to do is get all of these things reconciled to where we have a planning area boundary that's not just a, not just a buffer, in essence, that it's, it's reconciled down to section lines, and it's got neat corners to it. And then make sure that the terminology that is used within all of our regulations, our zoning code, our Conference of Plan, our Master Street Plan, all of those things are consistent and lined up under one common definition. So it's, it's a little bit weird because, you know, why would we be doing this? But when the subdivision regulations already regulate the, a full extent of one mile.
Yeah.
So from a standpoint regulatorily, it doesn't, it, there is no change.
Well, and that one mile's getting ready to be two miles.
So what, in passing this would essentially allow us to dictate if we go through and say, we're, we're creating a planning area boundary. We, we create the planning area boundary now. We modify our, our Conference of Plan, our Master Street Plan, and we modify the subdivision regulations such that it says that it's within the city limits and the jurisdiction of the, the planning area boundary. At that 2020 mark, you know, in 2021, when we get those census figures back, those people that are two miles out aren't automatically regulated. So in, in a way, it's, it's restricting that future regulation, that the city would have to take a proactive step to go beyond what's in the planning area boundary in the future. So if the city made a decision that says, we don't want to just go one mile, we want to go two miles, that would require a vote of the Planning Commission, vote of the City Council. So in, in one respect, that probably, this is probably restricting it more than it is liberalizing it. Because if we do nothing, we get the 2021 census figures back, then people that are within two miles of the city limits wake up one day and they're, they're suddenly subject to the subdivision ordinance of the city of Conway.
Is this something that you feel like has got to be done tonight?
Oh, we certainly can wait. It's, it's
I'd like to come by and talk to you, and I just, this is a busy time of year for me, and, and I'd like to come by and talk to you about this. If that would be okay with you. Would you mind holding this in committee?
Yeah, that's fine.
Would counsel mind holding this in committee?
Sure.
One thing, too, to point out.
Sure.
This is not, this is not expanding any kind of authority of the city. We've had this authority for
Sure.
He's like he talked about, he's just reconciling the boundaries.
That's, and, and I'm okay with that, but I want to make sure that I know what we're talking about, that I know what we're talking about before we, before we jump off in it. And I fully, I fully agree with the fact that we need to have some kind of, not control, but say so in what goes within our boundaries of where we might well be in the not-too-distant future.
Sure.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second to adopt.
Okay.
So what needs to bear procedure?
Whatever.
Well, we gotta, we gotta vote. Do you withdraw your motion? When you withdraw your motion yourself?
I don't have a problem with doing this at all.
Okay.
I mean, I, I mean, my, my own self.
That's okay.
I mean, we've had time to talk to him prior to tonight.
No, I understand.
Monday, Tuesday. But I don't know, I don't think it's gonna change my mind
Okay.
about it if, if I wait, but I'm just
We have a motion and a second.
If you want to call a vote, I'm okay.
Go ahead and vote and go from there.
If you want to call a vote, I would, I'm
Ms. Hurd.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay.
I'm the only no.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hawkins, when you go meet with James, just let me know, I'll be over there.
Great, thank you.
The territorial jurisdiction aside, a couple of things y'all voted on tonight is to really help our processes. And to, and Mr. Shaw vouched for this, probably. We were trying to pick up our pace and get anything done. One thing that, one thing, one thing that'll come before y'all, right after the first of the year, is going to be a change of software to really pick up our, our pace there.
Good, that's great.
Can we circle back to?
Yes.
Let's see, C3?
Number three, C3.
I just wanted, just the thing I wanted to check and see what the motion was on C3. I know, I know what I heard the mayor say, and I just want to see what the actual motion was. Was it to?
To approve an impact fee credit agreement.
Yeah, but he, he said motion to approve the warranty deed. What he said.
That's true, that's what I said.
Okay, yeah. So, but what was the actual motion?
Impact fee credit.
Okay, that's what it was. I just wanted to clear it up in case there's any confusion.
That's what I thought.
It looks like the motion was proper, but it just, it was repeated incorrect, and I'm not knowing any
No, no.
I'm just making sure that that's what everybody remembers.
Yes.
No, I want it done correctly.
So it was entered into the impact fee credit agreement, which was rushed out. Okay, thank you.
No, thank you. No, 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 thank you for straining that out. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have an ordinance appropriating funds for the employee appreciation bonuses. Mr. Whittingham, if you would step up, this would be $350 for full-time employees and $150 for part-time employees. Mr. Whittingham?
I don't really have anything to add, Mayor. I put the numbers together for the ordinance based on our current enrollment, our current staffing of full-time and part-time employees. So to award the bonus as we've done in previous years, this would be the cost to, to do that.
I make a motion to waive the three readings. Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance.
Yes, second.
With, we'll need the emergency clause on this one.
Doesn't have
Yeah, it does up here in the ordinance.
Oh, in the ordinance, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Second for me, too.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion?
As usual, the motion does state that part-time elected officials are excluded, meaning us.
Yes.
It does not mention full-time elected officials. Are they included?
Yes, I don't think they are.
They, they need to be.
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, just to make, be clear. All right.
Ms. Hurd.
Thank you.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
And the emergency clause. Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Thank you. And on behalf of all of our employees, thank you all. They are a great, great group of people. Thank you, Mr. Whittingham.
Yes, sir.
Our last bit of business tonight is an ordinance appropriating funds for the settlement of a lawsuit. And Mr. Clausen, I will turn this over to you.
Well, this body's already voted to enter into the settlement agreement, and this is just an ordinance appropriating those funds.
Do we need an emergency clause on this, time-wise?
Make a motion, we waive the three readings.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Ms. Hurd.
O19-126. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Passes six to zero. That's all we have for tonight. I hope. Oh, yes, sir.
So I have property at Ingram Street. And we were, you were talking earlier, he miscalculated on the square footage.
Okay.
And so it's 21,000, so it was just taking it from the four to five. I don't know if that makes a difference.
It does make a difference because
Okay.
Yeah, it makes a difference.
On the Ingram Street, and so
That would allow two duplexes, which would be four.
I just wanted to, you know. I just wanted to, you know.
Is that correct, James? I mean, is it, is it 21,000?
Yeah, I, I, I got flustered. I didn't have my report with me, but yes, that, that's correct.
Okay.
So what, what can we do about that then? Can we suspend the rules and bring it back?
We've not had this before.
Can we suspend the rules and bring the ordinance back?
Would you expunge the vote? Would that be?
This is a first.
We've never had this happen since the long council.
I'm glad you showed up.
Yeah, I am too.
Yes.
I would say that's what we'd have to do, suspend the rules, revisit that item.
You want to make a motion? Make a motion that we suspend the rules and reconsider that item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero. We will revisit item C6 concerning ordinance to rezon property located at 472 Ingram Street. Based on new information from R2A to a PUD.
Thank the original motion.
We should probably go through all the steps again.
Yeah, that's what I was pulling it back up for.
Yeah.
Uh, this was reviewed by the Planning Commission at their meeting, November 18th of 2019, and the commission voted unanimously to send this to City Council with a recommendation of approval, including the approved uses and conditions as outlined, as outlined in the Theodore Bond PUD Final Development Plan. With new information, or no, with, not with new information, with correct information of the square footage of this property, we can now revisit this particular situation. Uh, we thought originally earlier tonight that this was not large enough to do two duplexes, but now we have determined that it is large enough.
So, yeah, I, I made a mistaken calculation. I'll make sure I bring my staff reports in the future.
That's alright.
Um, but, uh, based on the information in, and his lot being just over a half acre, and R2A minimum lot size is 10,000, half acre's just, just slightly over 20,000. Uh, so it goes from him being able to do four to five.
Okay, okay.
So, the kind of the trade-off in the situation is, uh, it's an additional unit, but we have some control over the appearance.
We need to, um, make a motion to waive three. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to waive the three readings. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes six to zero.
Make a motion for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance without any further, is there any further discussion?
Well, yeah, I just, I, I appreciate your willingness to invest in this area and build something and work with the planning department to do a PUD. Four units to five is not a horrible jump. I do want us to be mindful of this area, though. Too many, uh, too much. A two to five to me is too much, but four to five is something we can live with. So thank you and good luck.
Yes.
And would this be a new ordinance? Would have to be a new ordinance number.
It'd be like 128.
Yeah, we're not. So it would be 120.
Okay, so it will be O-19-127.
127.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Ms. Hurd.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?